Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our May 14th meeting of the State Board of Education. It was a good day yesterday. It was a long day, but I think we really got a lot accomplished. So, welcome back and hopefully Mr. Sutton said I'm on the clock this morning, so we'll see. All right. We'll take a few minutes to kind of gather our thoughts and think about what we are here for today and center our thoughts around students and teachers and what our job is this morning. So join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. All right. Do we have any changes to the agenda before we start? No? Okay. First thing on our agenda is the liaison reports. Does anyone on the board have something you would like to share this morning? Again, I want to thank Dr. Hill for yesterday taking us and letting us tour the City Serv facility. It was very eye-opening and I think there's going to be some new doors open because of that tour. So I know there were several at the department. I could see the light bulbs just...
We're going to set up another tour, so if you know everybody who want to join us when we do that, we'll let you know.
Okay.
We'll send out an email or something to the commissioner, but we're going to have that set up early next week.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
The date, I mean, which will happen, so we'll give everybody time. I know Ms. Chambers was wanting to go, being a logistics person like she was.
Right.
So she wanted to see it. So she's scheduled to go in the future, so we may just try to do it at the same time she comes back.
Do another time, okay. All right. That sounds great and so I'm anxious to hear the results that come from that. A couple of things that I had, our GSC committee, Governor Affairs Committee from NASV met this last week and a lot of information, probably the thing that we would need to be updated on was the funds that are being appropriated through the government. There's lots of money to be spent and one thing that they emphasized to us was accountability, just to make sure you're doing what you say you're going to do so you can get the results that you want to get. And a lot of states were putting emphasis on summer learning and several states were using their funds in the area of mental health. And then also our ESA committee met this last week, maybe a week before last, and Ms. Kaufman, I'm going to leave that up to her to give you the update, but one of the things that they did talk about was the numbers tested and I think you have an attachment to your agenda there of the numbers tested. And it was a pleasant thing to hear that the numbers in the state, as far as numbers tested on ACT Aspire, were so high. And so it was a good thing and it just shows how hard the districts have been working, how hard teachers have been working, principals have been working to reach out to parents and stakeholders to, you know, get kids in and get them tested. And so that was just some good news. And so that was all I had and I'm sure Ms. Kaufman was going to update more on that in a few minutes. Teacher of the Year.
Alrighty, so I just wanted to share a couple of highlights from this past month. It's been a busy one. It's been good and I like being able to say that, too. So it's been very enjoyable. Going back to Educator Commitment Signing Week and we had a signing day at the Capitol and as I was putting this together, I was like, oh, that was before the last board meeting. No, that was actually after the last board meeting and so it's, yeah, there's a lot that's been going on. But this was an exciting day over at the Capitol. The governor, Secretary Key spoke and really when you think of signing days, we often think of like athletics and, you know, athletes signing their commitment or their letter of intent. You know, so this is a chance for high school students to come and sign their commitment to education. And it was just really neat. There was different schools, mostly in the central Arkansas area, but Rabbit was included. They came down. We had, forget everybody, but Little Rock, Cabot, Greenbrier, Sylvan Hills. I mean, it was just, it was really, really fun and a great day. So kudos to everyone who put that on and put that together. But, you know, to get to have these students coming in who are exciting, are excited to be there, excited to think about, you know, their future and what teaching can mean and hearing their stories is just a lot of fun on that day. Also, another exciting time, graduates and this month has been, I've been able to go around to several different universities and talk with, you know, these people who are about to enter the workforce and enter the teaching field and so that's been another exciting thing. Fun fact, a picture on the right, University of Ozarks, on a windy day, whatever that thing is, even with sandbags holding that down while you're talking, it can still fall on you. So that was fun. If they weren't paying attention to what I was saying before, after, you know, it caused a little excitement there, so that was good. But no, I think just getting to share and to hear from them, too. You know, I got to eat lunch with some of these folks and just stick around typically after these events and you hear why they're excited and how many of them, it goes back to a teacher that is impacting, that has impacted them. And so, and it just renews that, it re-energizes me as we think through that and what that means. So that's been a big part of this month. And so has this. So Arkansas Ideas, which is where a lot of the online professional development comes from for teachers or they have access to, we are able to put together a course and this has really kind of been a passion of mine where I've been going around this year talking about what does it mean to create a culture that connects and focusing on how do we merge rigorous academic content with social emotional learning instead of, you know, so often I think we hear those and they're separate things. It's like, well, let's have social emotional learning lessons, let's have these days that are committed to that. Well, how do we blend that together? How do we, how do we say, you know what, we still have to, there is content that we've got to make sure that we're achieving and how do we blend these things together? So doing that, how do we elevate student voice and bring in student adult collaboration? And that's really what this course is focusing on. So I had a couple of days where we were filming for that and you can see in the group picture, you might notice Stacy McAdoo's in there, our 2019 Arkansas Teacher of the Year. We also had Beth Hill from DeWitt and they brought students as well. And so that was one of the exciting parts for me is in this course, I wanted to make sure that we're talking about student voice and collaboration, well, let's make sure that we have that here in the course.
Did you do a little concert?
Well, yeah, so the magic of video and editing, so it's pretty, hopefully that comes together well where I can play, I don't actually play well, but I can play four chords over and over again and then they're going to somehow make it seem like it's, it actually is decent. So, yeah, that's kind of fun. But yeah, so, you know, it was really exciting. Cameron Vaughn was our producer and we're still kind of working on that, putting that together. That'll be ready, I think, by July 1st. So a lot of work going into that as well and hopefully that all comes together. So there's a few quick highlights of the month and, yeah, so it's been fun, a lot of exciting things as we get to the spring and as we are starting to come out, you know, of what this year has been. But I think we're also seeing some of the, you know, when we're talking about creating a culture that connects, some of the things that we have noticed this year and the importance of those things, they're not going to go away after this year. There are certain elements that this has exposed and that we're going to have to really make sure that we are doing a good job moving forward and so hopefully this brings some of that to light.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Secretary.
I'll start my report with Deb giving an update on our ESA addendum and then we will move to Stacy and Ivy and the team. I think there's a number of things that they want to update you on. There's a lot of work going on and what you're going to see and hear about today is probably a snapshot of it, but definitely want to cover a number of things, especially around the topic of how we're spending the federal dollars that are coming in.
Good morning, Deborah Kaufman. Morgan, if you'll bring up our ESA, Every Student Succeeds Act webpage. On this page at the very top is the addendum that I want to highlight for you today. And this is posted out for public comment. I brought this to you some time before when we first had the opportunity to apply for an addendum. We submitted that to the U.S. Department of Ed. U.S. Department of Ed later came out with additional waiver opportunities to states and then scheduled individual calls with states. So during our individual call, we, as I'm sure you've heard others say, we're one of few states that have been in school all year. So that really shifts us to a different category. And in our conversation with the U.S. Department of Ed, we expressed, and Dr. Arora was on that call with us, we expressed our belief that we would be able to assess 95% of the students in Arkansas this school year and that we would be able to run our complete ESA School Index according to our rules in our approved ESA plan. We also said, what's the timeline for submitting any updates to the U.S. Department of Ed because we won't really know and you know that we like to be data-driven in our decisions. So in that conversation, the end results are, we have plenty of time, they are excited and it's hard to get federal attorneys excited, but they were excited that we would be able to come back with data-driven decisions later on in the summer, early fall. So since that time, they've given us written guidelines and the written guidelines involve this addendum. So with our belief system that we will test 95%, that as you go through this template and you'll see Arkansas is highlighted, if you're reading through it, you'll just see that anything that we've put in the addendum is highlighted, so it's easy to find. But basically what happens, Morgan, if you'll scroll with me, is we're requesting on page six to basically skip the 2019-20 year. We have no data. The pandemic hit, we were unable to do statewide assessments as were all the other states unable to provide assessments. So everyone's in the same boat. But in our approved ESA plan, it says that we will test every year and we will act accordingly to that data in regards to identification of schools in need of support and/or providing the support and extra federal dollars. So in this section, in section, just a little bit more farther down, get to D, there you go, highlighting. In this section, you'll see that we have marked identification of schools that we're asking for an addendum on the identification of schools, which just means that we're skipping that 19-20 year and using 18, 18, 19, and 21 data, skipping that 20 year of data, to have three years of data in our identifications. We will continue to support our schools in need of comprehensive support, but this will be the first year they have an opportunity to exit support. So if we test 95%, then we'll be in good shape to allow our schools to exit identification. This also moves our identification year on to the 22 school year. So in our ESA plan, I know it's a lot to remember, but in our ESA plan, once you have your baseline data and you identify schools in need of support, our lowest performing 5%, our schools that are persistently underperforming subgroups, once you've identified that, you provide support for them for three years and then you re-identify to see who exits or who needs to stay in or go into more intensive support. So by skipping that year, that's shifting everything forward one year. So if you're scrolling on, Morgan, to page eight, it gives our new timeline, let's keep going, we're to the very bottom. Then it starts in with the identification and you'll see in here that we've written in our rationales for continuing to provide support but beginning our exit process. In our approved plan, schools must meet exit criteria for two years. So we had a number of schools that met the first-year exit criteria at the end of 2019. They were looking forward to 2020, no data. So now with 2021 data, if they've met exit criteria, that will be their first opportunity to exit that level of support before the next identification cycle. So it's a lot of information. We have it out for public comment. We will also come back and have a conversation with the U.S. Department of Ed before we do our official submission of this addendum to see if there's any other cleanup or any other thing that they would like us to do. They may request that we come back in and do, it's called a red line revision to our approved plan, which basically would be coming back in to where it says three years consecutive data and putting in 18, 19, 21. We expect, we may have to do some of that, but they said, let's come back after we know if you're going to meet the 95%. So we expect to have good preliminary data, we have good preliminary data today of how many we've tested, but we have to go through a corrections process and make sure that it's looking that way on the official data. And once that happens, we'll have that conversation and be ready to submit our addendum and do whatever they need us to do to get our plan in order so that we're in good shape with the vets. Our ESA plan, our approved ESA plan is our contract with the U.S. Department of Ed for federal monies. So that's what gives us Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV, Title V, Title IX monies. That's our contract. So we're lucky that we get to customize it to fit our state and I appreciate all of our school districts that have worked so hard to help us stay on track with our plans. Any questions?
Thanks, Deb. So as you read and hear news stories about this school year, right now you're probably hearing and seeing a lot of what I would call bragging about how schools are reopening now and all the work that's going into schools reopening, that's all you hear about is reopening. Well, I want to brag because we've been open since August 24th. You know, so nobody's really talking about the states that have stayed open for in-person learning. A lot of conversation about the states that haven't been. And so, yeah, I get a little irritated with that. I'm just going to be honest with you. Because we have worked so hard to be open and stay open when, you know, last August and thinking about where we were then in this pandemic and how much has changed since then and where the thought, many around the state thought, we'll be in two weeks, by Labor Day, we'll be out again. And we didn't. We didn't do that. As a matter of fact, this week I was at a school, Dr. Wally and I visited Quipman Public Schools. They had a big celebration for their professional learning communities, the first in the state model PLC district, K through 12. And they have not pivoted one time through this entire year to virtual learning because they had a commitment. I mean, one of the things that they, the leadership there said is that we had a commitment to be in school for our kids. And so whatever the adults had to do to accommodate that and to support each other in that process, that's what they did. Very strong community. And there are others like that. There are other schools that have had to pivot either minimally or maybe not at all through the course of the year. So I just want to brag on our school leadership, our educators that are out there. Joel, you've seen what they've been going through and you all have heard, you know, this year, the challenges that they've had. And it has been hard because if you're thinking about a district that maybe 20, 30% of their students have opted for digital and the teachers, how they're having to manage that. But we're, you know, here we are, two, two and a half weeks left and we've made it. You know, we've made it. We've had graduations without outbreaks. We've had amazingly, and I can't believe this, Dr. Fairford, we've had proms and we haven't heard of any outbreaks coming from proms. So I just, you know, I want to say how much I appreciate the work that they have all been doing to make this school year successful and for the governor's commitment. You know, last April, he said, we're going to be in school in person. And he set that expectation that that was what we were going to do. And, you know, to look back, to think about it right now and to think about, you know, all that we've been through, if you don't look at it through the filter of all those challenges, it looks like it's been no problem, right? It's been easy, but the filter is definitely different when you have lived day-to-day in those school buildings like they have. So our teachers have done a great job. And moving forward now, what are the things we're going to do moving forward with the millions and billions of dollars that are coming in through education? What we are going to talk about now mainly is going to be how we're using the ESR 2 money and the things that we have in place now. And then we are still working, Ms. Kaufman's team, working with the U.S. Department of Education to get all of the right information we need, the clarity we need for, we called ESR 3 and we were mildly corrected by the federal government folks. They said, we prefer you call it ARP ESR. So we'll do that, ARP ESR. That will be coming in the future months. We'll be talking more about that. But right now, I'm going to turn it over to Stacy and let her start this presentation. Please let this be a conversation. If you have questions through the course of these updates, just let us know and we'll try to answer them.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So Ivy and I will actually be doing a duet today with backup singers and this is either going to be a beautiful concert or karaoke, but it's really good information, okay? We've not rehearsed, but I'm pretty confident. Are you confident?
Got the backups.
Got the backups right here. I'm worried about Dawn, but other than that, I'm feeling pretty good. It was kind of this morning when I popped in Ivy's office and we just kind of went over exactly who was doing what and I got emotional while we were talking about it and I'm going to get emotional right now because, guys, I'm so proud of our state. So proud of us. When we say that we've been open all year, we've been open all year. And our teachers have worked hard. Our Department of Education has worked hard and we have good things to talk about today. And so those are some of the things that you're going to hear, or what are some of the successes we've had and what are some of our concerns, but what are some of the successes? So just real quick, the first pot of money that came into our state was 128 million and that was released or announced last March, okay? And that's what we refer to, you've heard it referred to as CARES or ESR 1. All right? So of that 128 million that came in for education, we wanted to give you a little insight today on what the state actually did with their set aside and what we did with some of those funds. And so if you look at where it talked about state provided and Ivy, go ahead and get up, go ahead and come on up because I know you're going to go into some detail on a piece of this. But one of the things is we did provide digital curriculum options around the state, okay? We partnered with APSRC and were able to provide Linking Learning for free for every school district. Another thing that we did is we provided PPE and that was huge for our schools, all right? And this is something that Greg and Dawn and Abby and Rodney and whoever else on that list, we had a stockpile even here at the state that we were distributing statewide. We worked with COOP, Stossen COOP, Darren Beckwith, trying to help organize and get the best cost for our schools and distributing to all our schools. We were calling schools weeks before saying, do you have everything that you need before opening up? Okay? This loading dock back here, people who normally weren't on the loading dock, packing up boxes and loading boxes, we're doing that here at the department. It was huge. Formative assessments for districts. We expanded what we did in our K-2 assessment system, 3 through 8, okay? And gave that for free, using this money to all of our districts, gave them choice so that they had formative assessment to use this year with their students. The Wi-Fi program, Dawn worked on that and I may have him come up in a minute and kind of go more in detail about that. But one of the biggest things on here that we're probably really proud of is this statewide comprehensive contact tracing that we had for schools. And I give my hats off and every time I get a chance to say Ivy kind of helped lead and organize that, she did. And I'm going to let her come up and tell you how we did that because that is one of the main reasons we got to stay open and that our school districts were able to pivot and we were able to give accurate information.
So I wish that I had pulled this up a few minutes earlier so that I could have sent the link to Dan, but when Secretary Key is talking about Arkansas opening schools on August 24th, I've gone back and Ed Week put out a map and talked about as of April 26, at least 14 states require in-person instruction to be available in all or some grades, either full or part-time, okay? So April 26, just, you know, less than a month ago, 14 states, but that wasn't even open to all kids for a full school year. When you actually go in, and I'll hold this up and you can go, so you see the map there. The dark blue are the states where there is currently an order for school to be open, okay? As you scroll over and you start reading about that, almost every one of them did not, that did not occur until this spring. Now, there's a few. Florida, I think it was on November 30th when Florida opened its school, when Florida governor ordered their schools to be open. Texas doesn't give the date of the order, but only Arkansas. When you look at this information, Arkansas, I would say is the only state that opened school in the fall on time for all kids for that opportunity for in-person learning. I think that is something we all should definitely celebrate. And there are so many people who are responsible for that happening. You know, we, you have to start with our teachers, okay? No matter what we say, what we do, no matter how available we make it, we know that our teachers, they are the reason that kids came to school in the first place. They are the reason kids have stayed in school. But what we did is we created the conditions to help make that happen. And so to do that, I've talked to y'all a little bit about that very first day when we had our first positive case in Arkansas and Secretary Key asked me to work with the Health Department to start coordinating a team so that we would have really good communication with our Department of Health. And I remember going into the Health Department for the first time in their command center and I was in, I don't know, just kind of all because it was like, oh my goodness, this is serious here. You saw all the doctors, all the people on the phones, you saw the maps that were showing where positive cases were being reported. It was daunting and it was scary. And there was a time when I kept thinking, I don't know how we're going to do this. I started thinking like a high school principal, thinking, how in the world would I do this in my building? Because when I heard about that first student who had been exposed to COVID-19, I wanted to cry just like it was my own child. And so, you know, we just, we had to really sit down and figure out, how are we going to make this happen? And so we started communication. The, the first communication started just with our team. We met together every day and we were going through, we were developing communication for schools to get through that rough period back in March, last year through the end of the school year. Then as the conditions made it harder for us to be meeting in person, we zoomed every day. And that wasn't always fun and there were days when we kind of got frustrated because either nobody wanted to talk or everybody had something to talk about and it was hard because communication like that is tough. But over the summer, we started getting more targeted and strategic in how we developed the plan. We had staff members who helped even staff a call just to answer questions back during the spring and I'd forgotten about that until this morning. But we had staff members that while everyone was working remotely, they were taking turns coming up here and sitting in two-on-one A and staffing phones for a call center. And there would be two or three of them a day and then they would take the phones home so that they could also be available at night. And the funny part was, I remember one time Andy Sullivan was on call for a nighttime because we kept it open until eight o'clock at night and this was back in the spring because we had told schools, you know, you may have parents and, you know, who can't come home and help their children with their schoolwork until late in the evening. So we were available. Andy Sullivan said it was about five minutes till eight and his phone rang and he was like, oh goodness, I'm just going to let the voicemail catch it. But he said, nah, I think I'll do it and he answered the phone and it was a newspaper reporter calling to see if we really were staffing the phones down late at night. So Andy was there and he was ready to go. I don't know if he's listening today, but those are just the examples though of our staff, I mean, we were there. So moving into the fall, that's when, you know, we were, our schools were doing a great job with their Ready for Learning plans. They were making adjustments to everything from how parents dropped off their students in the, in the circles or how the buses were arranged and their bus routes, they were adjusting how they delivered breakfast, whether kids were in the classroom, kids walking up and down the hallways to where they weren't going to be congregating. But we all, we all just still had that thought of, there's just no way we're going to be able to do this long-term. You know, how, how are we really going to do this? And I think everybody in their minds kept thinking this is going to be like it was back in the spring. And so we worked on plans to say, all right, how do we do this? Because we know the virus isn't going to affect people the same everywhere in the state all at the same time. So we started looking at, how do we give superintendents the autonomy to make decisions that are best for them and in their unique circumstances while still maintaining and sustaining in-person learning for the maximum amount of time? And again, we realized it really went back to that communication, that connection and Dr. Eel, that relationship. And so what we did, that probably was the best thing that, that we've done is we established relationships and maintained communication throughout this year. It wasn't just Zooms with superintendents, although we've participated in many of those. We've maintained weekly contact with the co-op directors who then work with their superintendents. But we set up a point of contact. We asked every district to establish a point of contact that handled the COVID-related things and we communicate with people at the Health Department. But we also set up points of contact to be the direct line to superintendents. And I asked our staff members that, you know, to step up and to be available for that. And they were assigned two to three co-op regions. So you can imagine in some cases like for Rachel Horn, who had the North Central O U R and Northwest Co-op. I don't know exactly how many school districts that is, but it's a lot. And at a time when COVID would kind of hit a region, you can imagine how many phone calls she was taking from superintendents. But what we asked was superintendent, talk to us so that we can connect you with the Health Department and help you make those decisions if you should have to make adjustments due to COVID. And so I just want to go through the list. Harley, Sarah Seeny, Rachel Horn, Tiffany Pride, Max Sewell, Andy Sullivan, Sandra Hurst, Missy Wally and Arregit Sarcar. Those were the points of contact for those superintendents. And those superintendents still call them today, not just for COVID. They'll call them sometimes when they've just done something really cool, they'll still call them. And they're, so we've established those connections and those relationships that are going to help sustain even through the next couple of years because as we're going to talk about a little bit more, the effects from this past year and a half are not going to be erased just because the guidance has been changed on masks or just because more schools are going back to in-person learning. We're not going to automatically flip a switch and go back to where we were before. And in some cases, that's okay. And if I can tell a real quick example, doesn't have anything to do with the presentation, but I was in a school district a couple of days ago and we were walking through the high school and I noticed on the floor they had arrows where they had changed their whole traffic patterns to where students would be kind of walking in a one-way. And I kind of grinned and I thought, you know, yeah, this is probably not lasted very long in a high school. And the superintendent said, you would be shocked. She said, students have done this all year long. Teachers love it, the students are still doing it. She said, you can't believe how many fewer tardies that we have this year. You can't believe how many fewer scuffles or fights have resulted just because kids are moving from class to class. And in some cases they'd even had fewer transitions or changed their transitions so they were at different times to minimize that, that physical contact due to the virus. She said, we've seen huge changes there. And she said, this is something we're going to continue. So we've learned a lot, they've learned a lot and our staff has really grown professionally too because they've been asked to research and find questions to answers that, you know, that would have never happened before. So I think when you look at the intent of those emergency funds to prevent, prepare for and respond, we were able to do all of that. And now what we're seeing is this is, these practices are going to help us maintain and sustain and be even better after.
One thing I love and it is she'll talk about the Department of Health, health collaboration with the Department of Health and those were education people that were over there at the Department of Health in that room. So we, they were at the Department of Health, but how many people from the department were in that room at times?
At times, fifteen.
Yeah, people from the O C S S team, staff here at the department became experts over there in that call room. So it was funny because when superintendents would call, say, well, I've talked to the Department of Health, well, they're talking to our people over there. And so it, it was huge. It was huge and it was successful and it's something that no other state did as well as Arkansas did. So good job to all those people and it was multiple people here at the department who made that happen. Dawn, come on down here because I want to talk about the Wi-Fi program and I know Gina was involved in this a lot as well. This was something that we all had concerns about with the pivoting and folks going to digital learning and access and how did that happen? And we actually had community partners who stepped up. So Dawn, you want to talk a little bit about that?
Good morning. Well, Stacy's exactly right. This was a collaborative project. You can imagine during a pandemic, it's hard enough finding just masks for everyone. Imagine trying to find technology for everyone. And we were very fortunate that Gina had some connections in the governor's office, Dr. Gossage, who was able to help us navigate some waters that we weren't ready for, that we had no idea we were going to embark on. And that was getting connectivity to kids in the best way we knew how. Well, what's the easiest thing you can do? We, you get hotspots. Well, that sounds easy until you have 50 states across the country who are all trying to get hotspots as well. So then there's all these procurement issues and all these other things you got to deal with. We were able to expedite a lot of things and the governor was, well, jokingly Gina said, how much do you think it would cost for us to get everyone connected in Arkansas? And I think she said, what about $6 million? I said, well, maybe 600 million. We could probably do it with that. Well, jokes aside, governor was able to give us $10 million. And the idea was to get this as soon and as soon as possible. We got to get these things ordered, we got to get these things in kids' hands. It was a big, big deal. We didn't realize how big a deal it was until we jumped into it. So Gina just asked me if we could do it and me not knowing how to say no, I said, yeah, we can do this. And then I talked to my team and they were not as happy with me when I said, we're going to do this, but I have folks like Jeff Killingsworth, Ray Gerdler, who are always behind the scenes, never in the spotlight here, who worked really, really hard helping us work with some partners. And when I say partners, I mean that very sincerely. It's one thing dealing with a vendor buying a product, but it's a whole different situation when you're working with a partner. And those of you who are in the private sector, you understand, you're, you're working with partnerships and these people care about kids just as much. So we started having these daily conversations about how can we get as many hotspots as we can with this $10 million? So we did some, I, I taught my guys how to haggle and how you don't accept the first price. But a bigger obstacle than that was not only getting hotspots for kids, was how are we going to distribute these? So we had to figure, figure out a distribution method for these, which we put most of the burden on the backs of the, the partners and they gladly accepted. They said, yes, we will help you do this. We've got to do this for our kids. We're doing this across the country. You guys, since you're starting school in August, most of our other schools were not starting in August like you guys are, we got to make this happen. So we were kind of like the guinea pig for some of these big vendors and how to handle the procurement piece, how to pay for it, how to do all that. I don't want to look at Greg right now because I know he's wanting to hurt me at times, but we had to do a lot of things that weren't really normal. So we were able to leverage this, but a bigger, bigger obstacle than that was SIPA compliance. And I don't know if you guys know what SIPA is? It's Child Internet Protection Act. And I said, we're not going to put a hotspot in a kid's hand without it being protected because we don't want kids, and this is something I've dealt with my entire career, dealing with E-Rate and all these other programs, we don't want to put dangerous products in kids' hands. So that was a bigger thing I said to the vendors, not only do I want it for this price, I want this thing to be SIPA compliant out of the box. When it walks in the door of the house, I want to make sure it's Child Internet Protection Act safe. And then they stepped back and said, whoa, wait a minute, that's a whole nother set of problems. I said, well, if you can do it with us, you're going to be able to do it with all the other people across the country and this is going to be a big deal. T-Mobile stepped up, Verizon stepped up, A T and T stepped up and the Department of Information Systems, I'm going to give them a big pat on the back for working with us on this because we all had to work together. Dr. Gossage was always pushing for us, everyone was working for us to get this done. And we were also able, not only to get the hotspots for $10 million, we got 20, around 22,000 hotspots, we leveraged this for two years because we knew this wasn't just going to be a flash in the pan, get through this year and then figure it out. I said, no, Gina, Dr. Gossage, all of us said, we got to get this for at least two years. Governor's office wanted it for two years and I said, well, we're going to make it happen. So Gina and I and everyone else were in there arguing with them and they finally came to see the light that we wanted them to see and they made it happen. They gave us a two-year contract. Well, I pushed them even further and said, not only do I want it for two years, I want the schools to be able to buy additional hotspots for that same price for the next two years as well. Because we knew the, the amount of hotspots we were going to give was just going to be a teeny tiny amount. We knew that. But we wanted to make sure we gave a fair distribution to all schools based on enrollment, not based on anything else because everyone needed them. And they said, yeah, reluctantly we'll do that as well. Couple of vendors were super happy about it. One of them was not as happy, but we made it happen. So we're very fortunate that we had three partners who stepped up. We made this SIPA compliant, we got a two-year agreement. Some of the partners are even thinking about going further with that agreement. Of course, there's more money out there. They want to make sure that they keep those hotspots going. And they also gave us the hotspot devices as a part of that two-year agreement as well. So it was a big lift, there were a lot of things going on. We've had constant communication with them amid all of these other problems with getting devices, one-to-one devices. And I want to say this and Stacy's alluded to how we were able to go to school and Commissioner Key, how we were able to go to school in August, but we were way ahead of a lot of states in being able to be one-to-one. A lot of our, we've been promoting technology and digital learning in this state for quite some time, my entire career in fact. But we were able to go one-to-one in most of our schools who already had products and who are already ready, even though they were old and they weren't the latest, greatest, most of our schools had the ability to go one-to-one to a great degree. Now some were way behind and they ordered products and we know it took months and months to get a lot of those in and there was constant communication about that too. But the collaboration to make this happen was a big, big deal, but we did it. And I was telling Deb this morning, I said, I got nine hours sleep last night and I still feel exhausted today. She said, we're all tired. And I said, yeah, we are all tired, but we did it for our kids and I'm very proud of that. So thanks for letting me speak a little bit.
Thank you for sharing that. Wasn't that amazing? Arkansas set the bar again and other states followed. And we actually set the bar in how this could be done in other states with these vendors and we made safe products available for kids. So again, we set the bar. Engage Arkansas, that was really going after kids that were non-engaged. You want to share a little bit more about that one?
Yes, actually, I've got to do that.
And this piece here is really, I think, just the beginning because in a couple of slides, we're going to talk about some challenges and things that we want to make sure we're looking at going forward. But what we've learned from this partnership with Graduation Alliance and our education renewal zones, if you'll remember a few months ago, we shared with you the online list of all the, the resources within each community that were developed to help when, help parents, help families, help communities. So that was part of this work. Another part of the work was Graduation Alliance directly working with students who were identified in schools as being at risk or being disengaged. And so they have had outreach to over 10,000 students and they now have direct support and coaching for about 60% of those students. And we'll have a more comprehensive report for you after school ends and, and we get more data from them. But two things that have really come out of this that I think help us to focus our efforts on the engagement of students long-term. Because we know that when, in the spring, when schools shut down and then even into the, this school year, there are students who in, in, you know, in terms of being virtual learners and, and this is something that, you know, schools didn't think about as they were doing this, but there are students who have jobs and are working. And so that, we probably have more students who are working at times when they would have been in school. And those are things that we have to think about and we have to mitigate in the future. So some of the data that we were able to get from the, the students who were contacted and actually Arkansas is a much higher percentage than other states that Graduation Alliance has worked with. But when asked about whether students had commitments outside of school, over 78% of the students said they had commitments outside of school that presented a barrier for them. And let me look here, 83, over 83% said that they were responsible for helping to take care of younger siblings or other children. So when you think about that and you think about a high school student or a student even in grade six through 12, those two barriers there are things that we've got to be thinking about going forward. And if students are working, then let's get to those root causes of why. And what are the types of jobs where they're working and how do we make sure that their work opportunity doesn't interfere with school? And so I'm going to look back here to Ross because in those new policies and procedures that are being developed and because of Perkins Five, our state is really focusing in on opportunities like work-based learning, focusing in on internships and opportunities for students so that they're able to get connected to work early on, they're able to have opportunities for jobs. And I think if we start looking at root causes of lack of engagement or barriers to success, I think that we can be strategic in what we're doing just within the K-12 education system to maybe help that so students aren't having to make those choices. And if they're involved in taking care of younger siblings, how can we leverage these funds to help develop programs and systems so that a high school student is not necessarily having to take on that responsibility, but we've got other community partners who can assist them. And programs like we saw yesterday, those are, we've, we've got resources at the ready. We've just got to figure out how to connect all of those pieces. So we'll give you more on Engage Arkansas. Missy Wally, let me just tell y'all just real quick what happened or she would have been able to give you more details. Missy is now Dr. Missy Wally and her graduation is this weekend in Georgia. She and her family were planning on being at graduation tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock. She got a message yesterday afternoon that her cohort needed to check their school accounts. Their graduation was moved up to 9:00 AM today. She was at work at 5:45 last night when I went home. She didn't see the message till about six o'clock last night. They got on the road at nine o'clock to get to Georgia this morning at about six. So I'm suspecting she is hopefully awake during her graduation ceremony right now. Her parents had already drove halfway to get there or she probably would have just skipped it, but anyway, just think about Missy this weekend because she's, what was a, what is a great occasion. But anyway, just think about Missy this weekend because she's, what was, what is a great occasion has been a little bit stressful for her in getting there, but she'll be able to provide a lot of information about this for you.
So those are just the big pieces of SRR1 and there are so many other things, but we're not, we're going to skip those. Districts, they received money too. But again, what you saw with districts focusing on their money was how to reopen and how to do school safely. And you saw a lot of technology being purchased. You saw a lot of cleaning supplies being purchased. You saw that the one-to-one devices, the Wi-Fi pieces. So those were schools' funds that they used at the beginning. The second pot of money was announced in December of 2020. Okay, so, so just a few, few months ago, okay? And the second pot of money Arkansas received for education was 558 million. Okay, so the first time, 128 million. The second pot, 558 million. Okay, and commonly referred to as SRR2. And so the state, again, we've been thinking about how do we leverage these funds, one, to impact our students and fill in the need of what needs to be done. And so some, so one of the big things that we launched recently was our teaching academies. Commissioner, do you want to share the information you have on that or you want me to talk about?
So one of the things that we determined that, and we saw the need for, and an opportunity, not only did these funds help us address some of the issues related to COVID, but they also helped us address some of the standing, the standing issues we already knew we had. And what, what COVID brought about was, yes, we know our teachers need help in developing how they teach in an online environment. So one of the things that we are established or have established is online teacher academies. And so the online teacher academy will begin this summer. We have six university partners that have joined us in providing this. And it will be Arkansas Tech, Henderson, John Brown, UCA, U of A in Fayetteville and U of A Little Rock are the six participants. And what this will provide for our teachers, 15 hours of graduate coursework and it will lead to an online teacher endorsement. I believe we have space for, trying to add up real quick, does anybody know off the top of your head, Stacy, what that was? 400? I think, yeah, I think that's, that sounds about right. So availability for about 400 teachers. Also in special ed, we know that's a longstanding issue for our state. So establishing a special education resource academy, a teacher academy, that is with three university partners currently. I think others have expressed interest as in, how can we get in on this? You know, it's like, strong interest. But this is going to be for a year. It's going to be over a year time and will start this summer. Harding, Henderson State and John Brown University, and this is going to be for 200 teachers initially. But again, 12 to 15 hours of graduate coursework, leading to a special education resource endorsement. So in the content area that these teachers are already licensed in, this will grow their capacity. And there's also a district component. We, districts have to be on board with this. So there are, we, we want the districts to be thinking about how they recommend their, their teachers and how they were going to use these teachers to provide better services. All paid for by, with these funds. So there's no, no out-of-pocket expense as far as tuition fees and assessment costs. And then also an opportunity that we saw with the governor's legislation on computer science, there's ongoing need for computer science. So we have established as well, Anthony and his team worked with Arkansas Tech University as the partner and to create the Computer Science and Computing Educator Academy. So there will be a number of, of course options that teachers will be able to access and that will be up to six graduate hours within the ATU's Department of Computer Science. And I think on the first two academies, we, I believe we're close to maxed out now, if not already. And as of the latest data from Anthony, we have 30 out of 100 spots signed up so far with the Computing Teacher Academy. We anticipate that will fill up as well. So, and, and these are ideas that came about from just thinking, what, what is it that we need? You know, what, what are we hearing from the field, so to speak, of what the needs are? And using these, these funds to help fill those needs. And looking to see, because there are availability of funds that extends multiple years, we'll be able to see what the success of, of these programs are and as far as expanding these to other university partners in other regions.
Yeah, thank you. And I want to piggyback on you a little bit. So we think, we talked about some of the conversations we had yesterday about quality of online instruction. I mean, just think of that, now we have the value of adding an online teaching endorsement to a teacher's license, that they've had specialty training in that. Arkansas setting the bar again. We only had 35, 35 current teachers in special education endorsement programs statewide. This Special Education Resource Academy opened up with 200 slots. It's already full. In a year from now, we'll have 200 teachers who added that to their endorsements and we're going to add more colleges and universities to be a part of that. So using our state funds to leverage that, to think differently about how do we serve our students with disabilities in the best place possible with a general educator in the classroom. Okay, inclusion, huge. I mean, these are goosebumps. Okay? Big stuff. Computer science with the new legislation, making sure, again, that we're making sure our schools and our teachers are prepared because it's not going away. All right? Another big thing that we're looking at with our SRR2 money is really focusing in on our pre-K and the support needed there. You know, and I've shared this with you before, the concerns we have around masks with early childhood and how that has impacted sounds, phonological awareness with three, four, five-year-olds, six-year-olds, where we've had teachers wearing masks, students wearing masks. What was going to be the long-term impact on reading, on speech? We can't wait to find out. We got to be proactive and act now. And so one thing that we're doing with our state funds is we have purchased curriculum for all pre-K that is focused on phonological skills. It's a 15-minute daily scripted lesson, high-quality, been vetted by our RISE Arkansas Specialist Upstairs. We've invested our money to, to hire four pre-K specialists to focus on the academic pieces where they're going to go in and actually do training around this curriculum, monitor support in the classroom on how to effectively use this and streamline and make sure that we're lined up with our pre-K curriculum going all the way into kindergarten and first grade. So, so huge things around pre-K and super excited about that. The district focus right now, and this is really where Tim's area has had a lot, districts had the ability at this time to start improving air quality and facilities to better prepare for students not returning because we've been there, but continue to provide healthy environments for students. So Tim's group has had to give lots of guidance and support and resources on how schools can best use their funds in that areas to improve school health and safety conditions as far as sites go. And so that's been, been a big piece. Is there anything else on SRR2 you guys want me to hit on that I've left off? Let me think of anybody in the group. So those are some of the big pieces or big conversations we're having right now about the use of these funds. We're going to continue, go ahead.
Well, I just, can we hand that out?
Yeah.
To, we don't have copies. We want to make sure we hand this out to y'all on the pre-K rise.
Yes.
This is, to me, this is one of the game changers for pre-K and just the curriculum.
Someone in Learning Services who's listening, in the literacy group or Abby, if you guys will get that pre-K flyer for the literacy copied and down here, that'd be great. Now we'll see if they're listening. Let's see if it gets down here, it will. But we're going to continue to fund the digital curriculum that we funded last year for consistency for our schools. We're going to continue to fund the formative assessment options that we gave to our schools the first year, in year two, again, for consistency so that they can keep up with the progress students are making. All right, so those are, those are big pieces right now that we're talking about as a state. So highlights again, and Dan, if you'll go ahead and pull up that PBS video, just kind of some of the highlights. Again, we were in person full year. We had the Engage Arkansas piece, we had the Wi-Fi piece, we've had curriculum, we've had assessments, but we were in person. But another thing that we did in our state that was a big, big deal was last year when we closed, we partnered with Arkansas PBS and we immediately, immediately after spring break, we didn't close, people went remote. And since it happened so quickly, we had to quickly figure out how can we continue to provide education to students. And so through this partnership with PBS, and I mean, there were 100-plus people here at the department who were working on this, our Teachers of the Year were involved in this, PBS, huge partner in this. PBS took what, what they did last spring, they actually, so at their National Education Telecommunication Association Awards, which is the Oscars of public television, okay, they won five of nine awards this last year. And there are four big awards, okay? They won two of them. And two of the big awards, so these are like the best picture, you know? Two of the big awards they won was Excellence in Community Engagement and it was Arkansas AMI. And the second one was Excellence in Education and it was Arkansas AMI. And so we're going to partner with them again this summer to roll out another piece this summer on just addressing learning loss and what we can do. And we're rethinking it, how we do it a little bit differently so that we make sure and get out. This is the video that was played at their National Telecommunications Association's award ceremony. This was also sent to Washington. Lots of people have seen this, but it highlights the work of PBS. And I'm more or less playing this just so that we can hear Joel sing and play the ukulele. So go ahead and play that.
I remember the day that Governor Hutchinson went on TV and told us that the schools were going to be shut down. Then you see the country slowly start to shut down, almost like lights in a gymnasium slowly shutting off. It can be really terrifying. It was really terrifying.
I remember sitting on the couch with my husband, watching and talking about the news coverage of the growing pandemic when the thought hit me. TV, that's the way.
Arkansas PBS reached out to us and said, hey, how can we help? We're here, let us know. How could we use and leverage the quality programming that was available to our students in our state and pair that with high-quality teachers and lessons to, to kind of create this partnership?
When the opportunity was presented to me shortly thereafter to be one of the hosts of the AMI show, I immediately said yes.
I honestly reacted before I even thought about it. I was like, absolutely, I will do that. That sounds amazing. I get to pretend to be Mr. Rogers. I thought that maybe I could make a little bit of difference during a time where a lot of students and teachers' worlds had been rocked.
It's Monday morning. Oh, the songs, coming up with the songs, you know, that was just a, how do we make this fun? And, you know, if you would have asked me prior to this experience, would you ever sing or play an instrument on TV? I would've said, no way. Let's kind of, you know, help, help students just see, you know, what, what's it like to be back in class? We want those experiences, so how can we provide that through, through Arkansas AMI?
In the classroom this year, a lot of my kindergartners, when they came into school for the first day, they were like, oh, you're the one from TV? Are we going to be on TV? And so it really was neat getting to connect with parents and students from all over.
Hands down, the messages that still tug at my heart are the ones from parents telling me how much my presence meant to them or their child and how they would have children that were not in my band or grade level watching my episodes just so they could see someone who had skin or hair like them. I can scream and shout all day long that representation matters, but it means a whole lot more when parents and students articulate that.
For two years, the Arkansas Arts Center, with support from the Arkansas Arts Council, developed an in-school residency combining the art of puppetry with the skills and processing of engineering. But with the pandemic closing schools, we could not implement it as planned. We looked for ways to pivot using the content created to help support students and educators and saw the incredible work that Arkansas PBS was doing in service of that mission with AMI programming. We reached out to see how our two organizations might work together to create a piece for broadcast in the final AMI programming week focused on STEM learning. Thus, Blueberry's Clubhouse was born.
Hi, everybody. I'm Blueberry and this is my clubhouse and this is my periscope. Come on with me on a super fun adventure.
Arkansas AMI and Arkansas PBS did an incredible job of continuing to educate students at a time where education was not being offered through the traditional system. And so it was so wonderful to be able to be a part of that and offer quality programming inside of what they were offering to students. And the collaboration during this time was really just what students needed to get a, get a feeling that they were outside in the world, yet still, still they were confined to their homes.
My whole family loved the show. I mean, what's not to love about Blueberry? It was just an incredible experience overall. Everyone was so incredibly kind and safe. They showed me so many things and they really taught me a lot about the arts and I've even picked up my own hobbies from Blueberry's Clubhouse. I made a lot of puppets over the summer. To be able to bring Arkansas, a lot of Arkansas, to people's homes while we're all stuck at home was something that was really special.
I have three girls, an 11-year-old, a seven-year-old and a three-year-old. What I love about Arkansas PBS is that it actually provides a range of programming, everything from just pure entertainment to what I love is Arkansas PBS did such a quick turnaround in the COVID world to provide alternative methods of instruction. So when they're learning some aspects of math, what I love to be able to do every now and then is just turn on the TV and they can see it in action or see it on some show. Arkansas PBS is really a, a unique platform that is, that is today serving a range of Arkansans because of COVID, but it's also providing the foundation that we need to make the right decisions that's grounded in, again, real content, real history, real facts and allows us to engage in the processes of decisions that are being made.
Relationships and connections are the heart of education. It's the foundation of the classroom and being invited into the thousands of homes was truly, truly an honor.
I was born and raised in Arkansas and I feel such a deep, personal connection with the students and the teachers in our state. So it was, it was truly a blessing to be able to help them in this way.
I am very proud of our state for putting this together and for PBS because I know it was a lot of work on their part. It's just something I'm very proud of and it's something that a lot of teachers don't get to, you know, experience.
When you think about people coming together and really collaborating in difficult times, this was that moment and they made something very difficult look very easy. And there were so many people who worked on Arkansas AMI and I know, I know, we made
So Dan, back to that presentation. Wasn't that awesome? And so there, we're, we're going to do it again, but we're going to make it appropriate for this summer and what folks need this summer. And one of the things that we're really going to be intentional about and planning for is knowing that a lot of kids are going to be at daycares or clubs or building, so, so with the, the programming, you also had these really robust guides that had additional activities and learning opportunities. So we're trying to build those guides this time to go with group activities or individual family activities. So schools can use them, clubs can use them, and so just the synergy part. But I'll, I'll tell you, the big thing was how many other state partners called and said, we want to be a part of it. And if you noticed in that video, there were lots of organizations. I mean, you had UAMS in there doing exercises and we were literally videoing and we'd get pictures of kids at home in front of the TV exercising with what was going on. And Joel, I know you had lots of feedback and, and I know you've done several Blueberry shorts and all those types of things.
His new best friend, Blueberry.
Blueberry, that's right. Blueberry, that's right.
If he didn't go back in the classroom, I think he'd have a new career in hosting a kid's morning show. Stacy, let me add, just so there's awareness too, of how this work connected with some of the broader statewide work. You know, one of the top issues for Governor Hutchinson has been rural broadband and expanding rural broadband. And one of the things that we found too in this work with Arkansas PBS was their transmitters were covering about 75% of the state. So when we started this, you know, we got, we were getting calls from legislators in West Memphis and Texarkana and other, you know, the extreme places, saying, our kids don't get this. We're not in, you know, we're in the Memphis DSA, or we're, you know, in the Shreveport DSA, so we don't get the broadcast of AETN. We get Missouri, or we get Tennessee, or we get the Shreveport or Louisiana. So they use CARES Act funds, and AETN, Arkansas PBS brought a proposal to use CARES Act funds to upgrade their transmitters. And that was one of the things that they approved. And I don't think it would have even come to light. I mean, they knew it, you know, but knowing it and seeing how it impacts, you know, when you've got kids that are trying to get on and get the content and they can't get it, that's, yes, when it gets a little more real. That, and with the being able to stream, you know, we have more and more people that are streaming their television instead of watching the old traditional broadcasts. So upgrading your streaming capacity to be able to stream it into more homes. So these things were connected that came about as a result of this work.
And throughout that video, those of you that are newer to the board, a lot of those were previous Arkansas Teachers of the Year. A lot of the people you saw in that video were ADE employees. Don's Group had Daniel up there. You had Susan Job from Learning Services. I mean, Suzanne Jones did a lot of work. I mean, tons of people worked on this that were never, ever on the camera. And so really, really proud of that. Okay, so some of our successes in the state, our concerns as we're moving forward. So again, we saw a significant decline in enrollment for pre-K and the primary grades. That's where our overall, when we saw a decline, that's where it was. And we'll show a chart a little bit about numbers in a second. And so again, what is that overall decline of enrollment look like for our local school districts? Mental health concerns around grief, isolation, and anxiety. So how do we leverage our funds to address that? Okay? And kind of launching a statewide initiative around social, emotional, and mental health and behavioral health. Again, leveraging our funds, getting with state partners to move forward with that. The governor's office has also partnered with us and applied for a grant around social, emotional, mental, behavioral health, and we'll be launching that right before, on the 21st at our summit, ADE Summit. So again, how do we work with DHS and other organizations and UAMS to come together to make sure that we have a really good, strong model? Lack of student engagement, again, continued access to broadband, and potential loss of credits for students or student retention. And one of the strong messages that we're really sending out to schools right now is it's not time to retain kids. It's the time to accelerate and be able to provide support and resources and fill that hole, that gap. Ivy, did you have something you want to add?
Yes. And kind of speaking to the acceleration and not retention. So one of the things that we saw very early on in schools that were part of the PLC pilot or had been working in implementing the professional learning community processes, we noticed right away that they were able to respond as we got a month, two months, three months into the school year, much easier than schools that had not really started that process or did not really have that, already have those collaborative practices, that collaborative culture in place. And it really became apparent, you know, when we started hearing from schools as they were realizing the struggles they would have with their virtual learners versus their onsite, or just navigating around, you know, kind of that constant disruption that started occurring. And so what we've really noticed with those PLC schools is the practices that they've implemented, they, part of that whole thing is building in that intervention time and not thinking about it in terms of, you know, I've taught it, I've got to move on, and, you know, some of these students now we're going to have to go back and remediate. They're thinking about the intervention while they're thinking about the teaching. And they're looking at that data, and their entire school community is doing that. And so we've really leaned in on them to help create a statewide guiding coalition. And what we're doing now is we've created this way for school districts to go in and sign up, and there's a team for each grade level. And so you have a principal from a PLC school that leads each grade level with a group of teachers from that grade level that are there and available to connect with any teacher throughout the state. And so when we talk about acceleration or intervention, we want schools to really look at that differently. So we're going to talk a little bit as we move into the next part on this next round of funding and the tremendous opportunity that school districts have and that we have also. Just real quick on the enrollment, that is a big challenge. When you look at, that number represents where we were in August when we started. When we look at each of our quarters, our quarter one, we had dropped from where we were in enrollment. When we get to our third quarter... Is the music tuning up for us? It's about time to start the singing here. You know, Stacy said...
Your five minutes is over, Stacy.
Five minutes is up.
I was going by an expedited process today.
There we go. So we know even our third quarter enrollment is down. And while we're talking about third quarter enrollment, all of you know that's an important data point for funding. And so we're watching that closely. We're having Dr. Orola's team run some analyses to see how does this year's third quarter enrollment change from, or third quarter ADM from enrollment? What does that percentage decrease look like in comparison to other years? Because the third quarter numbers are usually down a little bit from enrollment. But all of that is part of really understanding the impact of COVID. And then really watching to see where are our numbers when we come back in the fall and helping to think through and project out what that impact is on school districts. So I want to give a shout out to Greg Rogers and his team. Not only are they dealing with that side of it and all of the state funding pieces, all of these federal, the federal spending and the federal dollars, all of that accounting that has to be done. I cannot even imagine the hours and additional workload that his team has had. So for all of them, and I'm here a little bit, going to let Greg talk about the individuals and what they've done, because I don't want to leave any of them out. But it is a tremendous amount of responsibility to answer questions and to develop codes for the funding. That team works with the Public School Accountability Team. And so again, we have had our entire team doing things a lot differently than they've ever done before and having to really dig in and learn some things, so.
Ivy, are the pockets of decline, are they, is it statewide, or are there different areas of the state that the decline is greater?
So that's part of what Dr. Orola is looking at. When we looked at the enrollment to the first quarter ADM, and we did it by region, co-op region, everybody saw a decline. Some of them were a greater decline than others. And so that's the data that hopefully in the next meeting or two, we can bring back to you. There were some school districts, and I'd have to go back and look, at the beginning of the year, that did not really see an enrollment decline. I don't know that it was, there was a typical pattern. Secretary Key may remember that a little bit better than I. But most schools did see a decrease. Now, we saw increases obviously in our online charter schools. So what that'll look like next year, that's hard to predict. The greatest decreases were in kindergarten. And so the impact of that next year on kindergarten and first grade is going to be big. And so I think that's where our conversations with schools for the next several months, really trying to look at those things and help anticipate what that's going to mean. When Stacy talked about social, emotional, mental health, you know, students who maybe would have been in kindergarten last year, but were, they stayed at home, now they're going to come in for the first time, you know, do we have enough resources in the right places for those kiddos that, you know, maybe haven't had the opportunity for the preschool and kindergarten they would have had?
Priyastie, did we happen to see an uptick in people that registered their kids for homeschool?
Yes.
We did?
Yeah, we did. We absolutely did. So again, the first two pots of money, you had 128 million come into the state. Second pot of money in December, you had 558 million. The purpose of that was to prepare, no, what was it? Prepare, prevent, prepare, and respond. Prevent, prepare, and respond. That was really the focus of the funds. So now we have a third pot of money, okay? And I want you to kind of look at the shift in the purpose. To help schools return safely. Check. Arkansas set the bar. Maximizing in-person instruction time, sustaining safe operations of schools, and addressing the academic, social, emotional, and mental health impacts of COVID-19. So this is the focus of this third pot of money that's coming in. It was announced just in March, and Arkansas will receive $1.27 billion. Billion with a B, as Commissioner Key would say. Billion. This is referred to as ARPESR, not ESSER3. We're getting lots of questions about these funds. And the guidance just came out, and Dev's team is digging in, reviewing. Greg's team is digging in and reviewing. Rules and Guidance for us was released on April 22nd. It requires the state to actually put together a plan on how we're going to use our funds and how we're going to support the local LEAs. Local school districts are also required to submit a plan. So it's the first pot of money that's really required, a more robust plan on the use of your funds and what you're going to do. And really focusing in on the loss of learning and the impacts to kids and how you're going to address that. So again, we have to submit our application by June 7th, and Dev's team is digging into that, working on that, providing support. They're on Zooms constantly, making sure that we're understanding the guidance and expectation. Part of that also requires us as a state to have meaningful consultation with stakeholders. And so we have started by providing a presentation that we're regularly doing, and this is part of that presentation. And we also have built a survey in which people can respond to us in surveys, all right? We're also having small group conversations with different folks. But we have a list of groups that we have to meet with and have to have input with. And part of that is not only students and teachers, civil rights groups. I mean, it is a robust list of who we need to make sure that we are consulting about. What do we need to do, and what do we need to think about as we move forward? And a big piece for the state's responsibility is making sure that schools have a thoughtful plan as well, and that schools also have to have meaningful consultation with their districts. So on the first two, as far as preventing, not repenting, they probably need that, some of that too, but preventing, responding, preparing, I'm getting my words messed up. It's shifting, okay? Superintendents, back in last March and then in August, while we said we're going back to school, and then, they have been like this. And they're worried about, we've lost kids, what are we doing with our money here? We bought PPE, we've got one-to-one technology, we have new curriculum software, we've got teachers. I mean, they have been making decisions so rapidly that with these, with this pot of money, we're really kind of saying, slow down. We're going to get back on a sprint pretty quick because we don't have time to lose. But this is the opportunity to say, slow down, and let's think about, what is our data telling us? We have some feelings and some ideas on what's going on, but what is our data really saying? And when I tell you that 95% of the students in Arkansas has already tested, I can confidently tell you that no other state will have the percentage of kids testing that Arkansas has. No other state. Arkansas setting the bar again. 95%, and we already have, we still have another week left. You have states who are saying, we can't test. Yes, you can, and we did it. And that happened because of teachers and schools, and because of the assessment team at this department, and the commitment to, we need to know what the impact is. So slow down, let's find out what our data says, and create a plan on how you're going to address what needs to be addressed. Arkansas, again, will receive that $1.27 billion. The state, 90% of that funds go directly to schools. The state has 10% set aside, and there are some very specific things that the state has to do with their set aside, and there's some specific things that districts have to do as well. Some of our pieces have to be really aimed at lost instructional time. And that's one of those pieces where a lot of these rules and regs, and Dev can tell you that, they're really aimed at states that have just now opening up. Okay? Do we know that we've had some lost instructional time? Yeah, we went remote in the spring. Okay? We continue to do things, but we know that there's been loss there. We know that we had a loss of some engagement with students this year. Okay? We know that. So we know that there are pieces there that we're going to have to address and fill in the hole, okay? So 5% has to be focused at that. 1% has to be on evidence-based summer programs. 1% has to be on after-school programs. And so, you know, yesterday, our, we were all, cylinders were on fire on what's quality, what's evidence-based, what can we do? And then there's another 3% there on what the state determines to be an emergency of what they can use. This is the time to be looking for those community partnerships. I think Dr. Hill saw the presentation before yesterday. What do you think? This is that time to be looking for community partnerships, okay? That's what it is. That's what it is. So there's this idea of what do you do on the community piece? Dr. Pepper, you want to add something here? Okay. Okay. This is, this came straight from the rules and regs. With strategic investment, the American Rescue Plan ESSER funding can build the capacity of states, LEAs, and schools to sustain meaningful and effective teaching and learning and address the needs of underserved students. If there was ever a time for Arkansas to leapfrog, if there ever a time to change, to do capacity building and to think differently about what we're doing in our state in education, this is it. Okay? We have already set the bar on a lot of things that people thought we couldn't do nationally. And so it's about thinking differently. Those academies, getting more people indoors, building capacity in our teaching staff and what we have, I mean, those are those pieces right now where we've got to figure out, how do we do that for the long term, so that when the money's gone, it's not over? We've actually built something that's long past the funding.
Okay, so this QR code, you can either take the picture of it, I'm going to give you all a handout that has it on there too. This is a short survey that will help give us some feedback. Anybody remember what the date for our state plan is? June 7th. That's not very long from now, right? And so we're really hoping to help, that's going to help us with the feedback in addition to the conversations that we have when we present. But we want you to take this, share it with the schools in your area, share it with the educators that you know, share it with the parents that you know and community members, share it with your church members, so that we get a broad representation of people. We also, in presentations, when I do share with educators, I say, take this survey and just change it to meet your needs. Make it better, add some questions, and get that feedback from your community. Because what we really have to remember is that this is an enormous amount of additional money, and every decision we make is going to directly impact a student, directly or indirectly, impact a student. And we need to make sure that it does it in a positive way. And as Stacy said, look at what we've done this year that no other state has done, and if this is, this is the opportunity for us to come out and move ahead, because, you know, I want the next conversation for the Secretary of Education to be calling Arkansas to say, hey, what do we need to be advising people to do with this money? Because you've already done it, and you've done it well, and you have the results. We don't want to have to be trying to figure out, what does this mean for Arkansas? We know what it means for us. We know what it means for a school that hasn't ever opened. But, you know, we, we want everybody to be looking to us in the future because they should. They should because our state has stepped up. And every time we go through and talk about it, it makes me proud, it makes me excited and it makes me very thankful that we've had the support and the support from you all at every meeting. You know, you've asked us good questions, you've encouraged us to do things. We know that the reason why we did a parent and community survey early on were things that you all asked us to do, and that's important because that helps us to make sure that we're moving forward. So really can use your feedback and your support to help us get more feedback. So I would like to see if anybody behind me wants to, something we missed or maybe we just barely touched on, thoughts that they've had? Because this is the group back here who has done all of this that we're able to talk about. Have we got it?
And well, let me, let me address one, one final thing and Tim may, might want to weigh in on this, just to reiterate some of the, this is a lot of money, okay? So when you see a big pot of money in some of the districts that are getting these funds, they're, I understand they, they see opportunities, but they do need to slow down. They need to, to really engage their communities in these planning processes. But a lot of the questions we're getting right now are about, we want to put a roof on, you know, we, we want to, because it's COVID-related, right? It's, it's to create, keep safe and healthy environments. I'm just going to say this, you know, if you're, our expectation in the division does a good job, the expectation is you are responsible for maintaining your, your systems already. So your buildings, your roof. And if, so if you get feedback, if you get questions, because we know there are a lot of questions right now, coming to us, coming to legislators, coming to the, our federal delegation about the, the ability to use these funds for ARP-ESR, for facilities projects. One, if you get those questions, please encourage the, the folks asking, make sure they're engaging their, their communities in how to plan for these, this money. All right? That's, that's the first thing. That's first and foremost. The second thing is, there has to be a connection to COVID. Not every roof project can be connected to COVID. Very limited. And I'm, and I didn't, I'm going off script. I didn't tell them I was going to do this. But we have a pretty good audience. When, on our Friday Zoom, a lot of folks watch. We're trying to be very consistent in how we answer these questions. So, so that's something that, that is very active right now as far as the discussions of how to use these funds for facility-type projects, HVAC, air circulation. We know now, Tim did a lot of research back in the, early on about, and his team, about the number of air changes in an hour that need to take place to create, ensure healthy environments. So if, if districts are upgrading their systems, and many of them have already and continue to do so, if you're upgrading HVAC, that's, that's, that's all fine and good. It does have to have prior approval, right? Those, those projects have to. Not the HVAC? Okay. So the additional, so, but the facilities, so HVAC has, has been covered, but the additional facilities type expenses would have to have prior approval and transportation. Yep. So, so we've had some districts that are looking at upgrading their bus fleet, creating bigger buses so that there can be spacing or buses with air conditioning, you know, whatever it might be. So transportation is clear. The other area that we, see, there was, there was transportation, there were facilities. Another issue that we get raised a lot that you may get questions about is lost learning. You know, I'm going to reiterate this, is the lost learning and in the examples that the federal government issued, they did say, the examples are after-school, summer learning, that sort of thing. It is not exclusive to those. So, so these funds can be used for opportunities to recover lost learning or the, lessen the impact or overcome the impact of the lost learning time, but it is not limited to after-school or summer school. I mean, that's, that's something that we've been very, trying to get the information and clarity, but the US Department of Education said, well, those were examples we gave you. That's, that doesn't mean it's limited to that. So, but back to the first, back, again, back to that first point is engaging the community, engaging teachers, engaging parents, engaging the faith community, engaging local civil rights organizations, advocacy organizations, disability rights groups, I mean, you name it. We are, districts need to engage those groups in creating their plans. Did I cover it well enough, Deb? Did I hammer that home? Reasonable and, thank you. That's another. Reasonable and necessary, that's the, the very important phrase in this, in this legislation is reasonable and necessary to prepare, prevent and respond to a COVID-19 epidemic or pandemic.
Secretary Key.
Yes, sir.
When will the districts need to make application or whatever the method is going to be? What is the deadline on that? Has that been established?
So our plan is June 7th. Ms. Kaufman, you have the, or Stacy, do y'all have that?
So, so the state applications due June 7th. And then districts will have to turn in applications to us, but it will be this summer. What, I can't remember what the timeline was. It was like 90 days? We don't have a set date on it yet. Those are still guidance pieces we still have to put out to local education agencies. But I know that we've made a timeline. Let me bring Deb up.
Answering that, do you mind answering that? How many years do they have to spend the money? And how long, like, how long are those plans?
ARP-ESR funds have to be obligated by September 30th, 2024. So in the law, it says 2023, but there's a year tidings amendment that allows us to go to 2024. So as was presented, interim final rules were posted April 22nd regarding ARP-ESR funds. And they were implemented on April 22nd, I might add, the day they were posted. So we are reading through them. We are meeting with the US Department of Ed weekly now, and they put, in fact, that's what I was just doing, reading what they put out yesterday. Every time we have a weekly meeting, they're giving us just a little bit more information about how they want to do things. So we are drafting our application. And to, yesterday, while we were in state board meeting and they were talking, they gave a little bit more clarification about how states can move forward with their, with their districts to get the allocations available to them. So it's coming. That's why we're on the slow down. Let's slow down, get all the information, get it out to people to make really wise decisions.
Data-driven decisions, you know how I love it.
The timeline. Mr. Sutton, do you have any follow-up on, on that? I mean, is that, is that clear as mud?
Yeah, I think I heard TBD.
Yeah, it is. So, but there is a 90-day piece on when the money is allocated that districts have. So we're trying to flesh through and figure out when they have to get it to us. We know that we're, we've got a list of assurances that we're probably going to get out to them first for them to sign, that they know what they have to do and be able to spend some of their money. But to be able to get all of their money, they're going to have to have a satisfactory or they're going to have to do this application piece. But we don't have a set date.
Thank you. Deb, clarify, this isn't something we are approving. The plan is not something the department is approving, okay? They, they have to submit it to us, we review it, but it, it's not a sign of, or a stamp of approval from this agency to say, you, yes, you, everything you have is approved by us or by this state board, by the department, by the state.
No, in fact, ARP-ESR requires much more public posting. So not only do districts, are districts required to submit it to DESI, they're required to post it on their websites. So there's lots of new and different experiences with, with these funds than districts have had in the past. So trying to all learn together as we go through this. But yes, there, there are some very strict deadlines about when we have to make the funds available and then how much additional time schools have. We have to make the funds available within 60 days. And then within that time that funds are available, school districts have had to have submitted their assurance to us. And then within 90 days of the funds being available to them, they have to submit this complete plan and make it public to the community. So that's what, and we're trying to figure out how to help schools know what to put in that plan. I mean, they've just been through digital learning, so this should probably be easy.
Do, do you think that there will be limits for districts, like per capita expenditure?
I don't, well, that, and that's one thing, we, the state is, under the language, is not allowed to, to direct their spending, okay? So that, there's a lot of flexibility within their, within the reasonable and necessary language that, that we covered earlier. You know, so as far as per capita, I think, you know, the, the idea is they need, that, that's why the feedback is important. They need to understand if they have a community that is more severely impacted by COVID-19, what are the supports, what are the things they need to do for that community? So let's say it's an elementary, a Title I elementary school that, you know, has a higher number of students that are disengaged. What does that district need to do? So I don't think we're, there will be any federal or state directives or, or limits or caps or anything, but that's where the, the stakeholder engagement process and putting that plan out to the public is really designed to, to help the community and help that local, you know, local control from the standpoint of the, the broad local community to inform where the needs are and to focus on meeting those needs.
Okay, thank you.
So these are federal funds, so even though there is no supplement supply limitation on these funds, there are allowable uses of funds. So it's, it's pretty broad. It's very contextual to your community and your experience that's going on in your school district. But there are still federal requirements that go with every federal dollar, written justifications. You have to explain how it's COVID-related, how the cost is reasonable, maybe how you did bids, how you got a pre-approval. And then it has to be necessary, you have to have data to support why you're making these purchases. So you can't just buy something because you like it.
Right.
It has to meet that prepare.
Protect.
I want to say prepare, protect, prepare, prevent and respond to COVID-19. So it has to have some connection that has to be written. And then depending on what type of purchase you're making, there may be additional federal guidelines you have to follow, bid procedures, Davis Bacon, there's a whole lot of other rules that go along with federal funds. So while it's wide, it's not without the legal requirements.
Got it. Thank you.
Can you tell me, how is it allocated? Like, I'm looking at the list and Littlerock got 64 million, Springdale got 40 million, but they have similar population of student enrollment. So what's it based on?
It's based on Title I. Greg?
Okay. And this is over and above normal Title I?
Yes. So our school districts still receive their same Title I allocation, Title II, Title III, Title IV, Title V. They still receive those allocations and they're still on a timeline to expend those funds as they have outlined in their applications. This is money above and beyond those. And anything that you could have spent, any of those federal programs, Title I, Title II, any of those things you could have spent with those funds, you can spend with ESER funds. So it has, that's the first use of funds. Anything federal programs, ESEA, anything IDEA, anything Perkins, anything that's already allowed with federal funds can be expended through ESER. So anything that schools couldn't do enough of, they had more money to do with. And then a lot of more uses of funds.
And Deb, just, it kind of, this is where this over and above is different and, and the, the lack of a supplement, not supplant requirement is different. You know, with regular Title I, and y'all jump in and correct me if I'm saying it wrong, but they could, districts cannot use Title I funds to purchase high-quality instructional materials. You know, they, they could not use that to, to purchase a new reading, you know, elementary reading program. They can use it, this, these funds to purchase high-quality instructional materials because the effect of COVID is you've got to get kids accelerated. And if your programs, if you're, yeah, if you, if you, if you didn't have what you, you know, was an evidence-based program, you have that opportunity to purchase an evidence-based program now, which is very timely for Arkansas with our state requirements and the work that we're doing with RISE and, and improving literacy. That's one of the areas that districts had talked to Dr. Pride and Stacy and their teams and said, how are we supposed to do this? Because we just went through adoption, you know, process, curriculum adoption a couple of years ago and we've spent our allocated funds. Well, now you get a chance to have a reset, to buy really strong evidence-based curriculum. That's just one example of how, how the flexibility is there that could help districts go a long way to do some things that maybe they were going to struggle to do prior.
That's exciting, but also a very daunting responsibility for districts so that it impacts students. Well, and so that in three years, we see the results of it in students. Could you tell me though, how are Title I, because Littlerock and Springdale have very similar free and reduced lunch rates, so how, how are Title I funds classified? I'm just curious why there's such a big discrepancy there. Sorry. And I can, I can catch up on it later. I just, I just, looking at the list.
Get your Greg Rogers to the microphone, I'm loving it.
Okay.
Yes, yes. Hold him, hold him to it.
Tried to play it all day. Okay, so you want to know how Title I allocations are?
Yeah, I, I think I'd understand the different, the big discrepancy in Springdale and, and Littlerock when they have similar population, similar free and reduced lunch rates, but different Title I.
So Title I allocations are based off the federal census population as well as direct certification. Those allocations are sent to us, the feds determine what the allocations are per, per district based off that information. Of that, we have a little bit of tweaking we do based off charter schools, based off district boundaries, things like that. But for the primary part, when we get that allocation from the feds, they've already determined how it is based off the census and direct certification data.
Got it. So not school enrollment, district enrollment, but census data changes that?
Correct.
Interesting.
Yes.
And this money, when is it actually flowing to districts? Or have they already received the money?
We.
Or is it?
The ARP fund or ESER funds?
ARP, yes.
The ARP funds are just like the ESER I and II funds. Those are available on our system that we have to pull down and send to the districts based off reimbursement, just like we have been.
Okay.
There is a wrinkle that Greg was probably going to try to avoid talking about this, but y'all need to know this. In one of the, one of the latest, or one of the last legislative acts that was passed, there was special language that all agencies receiving funds from the American Rescue Plan, it has to go through what I would consider a, a special appropriation process. We have to work with DFNA to We have to work with DFNA to seek the appropriation, to transfer of appropriation for these funds before we can actually distribute those to the schools. It's not something that really is envisioned by the, what the federal law says, but it was, I guess, an extra layer of oversight that the General Assembly felt was necessary. And we had made provisions already to have sufficient appropriation in our normal federal grants line item, but because of this new special language, we will be having to work with legislature and with DFNA to make sure that the timing of when we can distribute these funds is as close to what the federal law says as possible. We want to meet that, we're still working to find out for sure how this new process is going to work with what the federal government has outlined for our obligation to have funds available. But just know that if that's something that pops up in your, any conversations that you have, know that we are working through this. This is something we really just found out about last week, Greg, is that right?
Yes.
And so we're, DFNA is on it, they're working with us, but just know that there's a bit of a wrinkle that we didn't expect, but we'll work through it.
But basically, we couldn't spend ARP funds right now because we wanted to, because I have to go to the General Assembly and get the appropriation authorized to spend just those funds. ESER I and II, we have plenty of appropriation, and if districts are spending those, we're sending those out to them.
Thank you. I can keep asking, I always have questions.
I know that that was a really long commissioner's report, Madam Chair, but I think it was information that you all need. There will be more information coming. I mean, you all need to be engaged in this, and you're vital to the process of stakeholder feedback. I mean, you're appointed as representatives of stakeholders in all congressional districts around the state, and we do know that y'all get feedback. So please help us get this survey out. We'll be looking at other opportunities. If you become aware of a group that we should be engaging with, please pass that along to us as well, because we want to do our due diligence, and there may be things that we haven't thought of that would be fantastic ideas. One last thing that I was going to mention is, we know that there are a number of community organizations that, that, one thing we've told our schools is, "Look, you don't have to bring students to you to work on lost learning." I mean, students don't typically want to come to summer school. That's, there's a negative connotation to that. So don't try to force that when there are community partners that you can work with over the next several years to grow those and meet students where they are. Dr. Hill mentioned, and we heard some of that yesterday, of the group that he's working with, there are other groups out there. So we are engaging with the Arkansas Out-of-School Network, that is, they are connected with ASU, Childhood Services, and they will be, we'll be working with them to help find some of those opportunities and those community partners where districts can engage with them or grow their engagement with those groups. And, you know, those kids are going to be at a community center, they're going to be at a Boys and Girls Club, they may be at a church, you know, daycare, day camp, some things like that where you can help kids learn, and maybe they're having fun and they don't realize they're, you know, getting learning, but they're also not having to go to a labeled summer school. There are many options out there. So we're working with groups to create those options or facilitate those options. So with that, unless the team decided, there's some of them that decided to be kind of quiet, but they'll be available. If you have questions, please feel free to shoot us an email, and we'll get them addressed for you. Thank you.
One question, is the department going to push this survey out on social media so